Good evening and welcome to Henry Ford College Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven P. M.
When?
This, this meeting is a Zoom meeting, the Zoom number nine nine seven three seven eight eight six three four three. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Steve Patrick Dambrosio.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
Lane is in Dearborn, Michigan. Roxanne McDonald.
Norma Illinois.
Doctor Michael Mead.
Here, Dearborn.
Mary Petchlikoff.
Here, Dearborn.
James Storp.
Here in Dearborn.
And Chair Hussein Barry.
Here, also in Dearborn. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item, please.
New board member oath of office. New board member Patrick Dambrosio will take the oath of office at this time administered by Dearborn Judge Jean Hunt. Judge Hunt and Patrick Dambrosio will stand and with right hands raised. Judge Hunt will ask Patrick Dambrosio to repeat after him the following oath of office.
Okay, Pat Dambrosio.
Your Honorable Judge.
Raise your right hand. I do hereby swear and affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do hereby swear and affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge duties of Office of Trustee of Henry Ford College to the best of my ability in the manner provided by law.
And that I will fully discharge the duties of the Office of the Trustee of Henry Ford College to the best of my ability in the manner provided by the law.
Congratulations, trustee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Secretary.
Your next item is approval of minutes. Approval of the for the following Henry Ford College Regular Board of Trustees meeting and Policy Committee meeting on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion offered by trustee Dr. Mead and supported by trustee Petchikoff. Are there any corrections or questions pertaining to the minutes? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dambrosio.
Yes.
Lane, yes. McDonald.
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Petchlikoff?
Yes.
Storp?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes, thank you. The motion is adopted by unanimous vote. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next items are President's items.
Good evening, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman and trustees. It's good to see you all again today in our December meeting. I have some updates for you on employee news and I also have some updates for you on general updates for the college. And then I have a few observations about the year that was, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty. Wow.
Let's skip everything.
Talk about a Freudian slip. So let me start off with a few items of congratulations on retirement. And one of them comes with a bid about apology. I, I neglected to note a name last month that has twenty years of service and will be retiring at the end of January, and that is Michelle Holinsky. We also have a retirement from, and Michelle Holinsky was an academic affairs assistant. Also, retirement, Steve Drogoyevich, a facilities associate in the facility services area for thirty-four years of service. Will be retiring at the end of this calendar year. And then I mentioned many colleagues from the faculty ranks last time we met who were retiring. And another one is now on the list, and that is our history instructor Pam Sayer, who has twenty-five and a half years of service and will retire at the end of this month. I also like to acknowledge faculty who have achieved the rank of tenure. And we have four of those. One is April Fellerado in mathematics. One is Sherry Clenzar in nursing. One is Shirley Mata in nursing. And one is Jennifer Stewart in sign language. So those are the employee updates we have for this month. Moving to some general updates in the college. Many of these things have come your way already by email or president's update to you all. But certainly many of our colleagues here on this meeting may have some new information here. One of them is that Henry Ford College being spotlighted in many different outlets of news media for a couple of different reasons that I want to congratulate your teammates who have made this possible. One is, one item that is being highlighted is the Futures for Frontliners program that trustees you have asked me about and been supportive of and interested in since its inception, when it was announced in April and then further announced in September. But we recently were proud to roll out a collaboration with Eastern Michigan University, whereby frontliners, i.e. essential workers, are given an opportunity to attend Henry Ford College with their in district tuition rate covered. And then, and now, as a result of this collaboration, they can transfer to Eastern Michigan University, where that university and its president were proud to say our partnership is so strong that those students can continue to have their tuition paid for if they are Pell eligible. Anything that is not covered by Pell, the university will cover it. Or if they are not Pell eligible, then the university is willing to give them five thousand dollars to tuition. Not surprisingly, and because this is truly a first in the nation effort, local media and even regional media and at least one national outlet picked that up and promoted it, including a quote from our governor. And by last count, we're over twenty-five places of successful media placement, putting a highlight on what we do here, which is to give access to the middle class through education. And another way we say that is to build better futures through education. I also want to congratulate some of the Henry Ford College efforts on this. And one of the Herculean efforts was from Rhonda DeLonge, who helped immeasurably setting up media interviews, setting up collaboration with Eastern Michigan University, and frankly tirelessly helping me deliver a message on and on and over and over so that we can hopefully drive enrollment for this program to help Futures for Frontliner students get through Henry Ford College and then on to a four-year degree at Eastern Michigan University. And I'm hopeful that other four-year institutions will similarly jump on and support our students. And also to note that we are not in competition when we try to change lives through education. I'm also proud to say that I'm hearing that other community colleges will be attempting to make these relationships and that one may be announcing it in a partnership with Eastern Michigan University, just like ours, very soon. And so I say to that and that institution who will announce that soon, congratulations to them because their students will also benefit from what we all do here as educators, and that is to try to help lift up everyone through education. Another incident of positive press for this institution, one that is particularly a point of pride for this board, is of course a partnership with the Dearborn Public Schools to stand up a financial literacy curriculum that was in partnership with the state of Michigan, particularly the treasurer Rachel Eubanks and the lieutenant governor Garland Gilchrist. You likely saw there was some good press for all three entities about that engagement that took place last week, including a press conference where Dr. Malaco, myself, several staff members joined the lieutenant governor and Rachel Eubanks, announcing the treasury, Rachel Eubanks announcing this, this great partnership, which will allow Dearborn Public Schools high school students to attend Henry Ford College or attend their own high school and get college credit through a financial literacy curriculum. And the goal here really is to give high school students of today a better understanding of how to use money and how to make it work for them. Also, how to avoid the crippling debt and financial mistakes that a lot of youngsters, including myself, made and give them a chance to get on the right foot forward. And as the lieutenant governor often calls this, this is a way to bridge equity gaps in our society. And I'm proud to say that Dearborn, as a college, as a school system, as a town, as a community, is the only community that the state of Michigan has targeted for a pilot program because of the collaboration between the public school system and the community college. And so I'm very proud of the announcement we made there. And I want to give special kudos to the people who really did the hard work on this, which are Vice President Michael Nealan from the college, Executive Director Shannon Peterson from the P-12, and of course, your esteemed and award-winning superintendent Glenn Malaco. We also have to continue work despite the pandemic on construction projects at the college. The most important, although the two of them are both important, but the most important one right now is the construction project that will expand our technical education building. Recall in two thousand and eighteen, the legislature authorized us to begin planning of that, which includes forty thousand square feet of construction. And that includes twenty-five thousand feet of expansion. And yeah, I'm here to congratulate Mr. Satkowski, Vice President Satkowski, Vice President Dr. Michael Nealan and Dean Dr. Pat Chapman for completing planning and design work for that expansion and not simply just completing it, but getting the state of Michigan to sign off on it. And here we are again. It's just like deja vu all over again. We're getting ready for lame duck. And the legislature is looking at whether they will authorize construction, which in ordinary years would be a foregone conclusion. But because of COVID, it's become a question. And so we've been working hard with our, our ability to communicate with legislators, including our local legislators and frankly, a lot of legislators outside of our district, asking them to consider authorizing construction during their lame duck session, which is dwindling now, probably two weeks or less left of those legislative sessions. And I'm proud to say that I've been hearing good things, both from the governor's office and the legislators about their support of this project because of what it does. It builds the necessary skills to bridge the skills gap that employers say exists now and will continue to exist in the future. And so I'm hopeful that, again, like in two thousand and eighteen, I'll be able to bash off an email to you in the wee hours of the end of the morning on lame duck's final day, or hopefully before, noting that construction authorization will continue. But from the college's perspective, we're now ready and approved to start that building project. The second building project that is worthy of at least congratulating you trustees on is the IEMP, the Institutional Energy Master Plan. You all approved the performance contract recently, and we will be continuing to move forward on that project, which recall puts us on the forefront of two important initiatives. One, holding an institution that is responsible in how it uses energy to support itself because it will reduce, this project will reduce our reliance on energy and it will save us money. But secondarily, it will allow us to stand up a curriculum that trains future workers in that very thing, remodeling campuses to be energy efficient and potentially, hopefully, move away from as much carbon reliance as we can. The other things on the college front generally are, of course, we get to enjoy the process of welcoming new trustees. Of course, we just saw the swearing in of one new trustee, Pat Dambrosio. And we, we being the college staff, met with that trustee, Pat Dambrosio, last week and began and completed our trustee orientation, which was enjoyable. And I appreciate Kathy Dimitriou and Vice President Amy Clark supporting me in that. And we have trustee-elect Irene Watts, who completed her orientation just today with Kathy Dimitriou and Vice President Amy Clark. And I appreciate both of them helping me. I'm going to continue to talk for just a few, well, more than a few more minutes. But trustee Dambrosio, I want to say to you personally, on behalf of all the employees of the college, welcome. I appreciate you taking the oath. And what none of us really expected would be the process on a computer. But it is historic, or it is tradition, that when a new trustee takes office, during my comments, I give you any trustee an opportunity to say hello. And I know I'm putting you on the spot and I regret not having given you heads up about this. But are there any things you'd like to say?
Well, I just want to thank everybody on the board, especially all the voters out there in Dearborn that supported me. And I'm happy to be able to serve on this board. It's a pleasure. It's an honor. And again, I look forward to working with every one of you.
Well, thank you, trustee Dambrosio. It's an honor to have you here. And you will probably tell your fellow trustees that I gave you more homework than you ever thought you deserved from a community college or university or college or anything.
More than they gave me in Catholic high school.
So we appreciate you being on board. And of course, all of us here are ready to serve to support you in your transition into this really important and meaningful work. And just, I see that trustee-elect Watts is here. I won't ask on her to chat yet, but I'll just give her a fair warning. Unlike trustee Dambrosio, I did not give him a warning. But trustee Watts, I'll invite you to make comments when we have you on the board next month. For those of you who are new trustees, I'll just say that the college is going to continue its tradition in January to have a State of the College address. Historically, I have spoken most of that speech and I've been trying to move away from that. And I'll continue to try and move away from that on January sixth, when we do the January State of the College. And I invite some other members of our community, both employees or our community, to give an address then. It starts at ten o'clock. It's open to the public. It will be like this, virtual. And all is, all are welcome and we hope to see as many. We will be announcing the campus climate survey and its rollout, which has been an ongoing project and one I thought would be out sooner. But what has happened, and I'm glad to report, is we've done a lot more work getting it refined to really speak to our community. And we'll be rolling that out at the State of the College in January. I'm going to move to look back on the year of two thousand and twenty, but I think now is a good place for me to pause and ask if there are any questions from trustees about things I've mentioned so far or anything generally about the college.
Trustee Lane?
President Cavalluna, in your president's notes and just now you mentioned the IEMP and the Energy Learning Center amongst the building projects. So I was just wondering if you've identified where that will be located amongst the buildings? Will it, I'm assuming that it's not going to require an additional building, but that it will be sited within someplace. I hope there'll be a new wind turbine instead of that little whirly gig that we have right now. Let's get a real one.
The, the answer to this is one that is interesting. And I think, I think I'd like to have Vice President Satkowski answer that question. Mr. Satkowski, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. Thank you, trustee Elaine. Great, great question. What we are doing is there is a area located in the tech building that was part of the process for the tech project to, how can I say? Empty it out, strip it out of everything and then use it as the energy center as Johnson Controls goes over the schedule and does the implementation of the energy plan over the next two and a half years. That will not require, you know, new square footage. It was identified during the tech building project. It is sitting as it's, as a separate project. And we did that for one, two particular reasons. One, it was not included in the IEMP, the infrastructure itself. It was included in the tech building. With the tech building going forward to the state, we wanted to make sure and hedge our bets and make sure we could get that building demolition done in time for the IEMP. So if there's a delay, anything in the tech building, we have that identified as a separate project within the tech building, so it can be accomplished. But it is within the tech building, renovation of current space. And to answer your question about the wind turbine and the solar array field, that will be significantly upgraded from what you're seeing there in the, in the current plans that are put forward.
Right. I would just like to then finally add, President Cavalluna, I would think that with the importance of energy and energy conservation or even materials conservation like water, you should be, crossing my fingers, you should be able to lobby hard at the state level with this being a unique program. Hopefully, they'll see the advantages of it and how forward-thinking it is. So I hope that that will give it a leg up to be able to be funded.
I hope, I will do that.
Trustee Petchikoff, got a question?
Yeah, I've got two questions. So John, stay on the line. Because they kind of piggyback on trustee lanes. One is, refresh my memory, is the Welcome Center and any of that property included in the IEMP? Or is it just the main campus?
It's just the main campus, but there is a, how can I say it? Piping, hookup, et cetera, will be run to that particular building so that when any kind of renovation is done or any upgrades are done to it, it will hook directly into that, that process. And when I talk about the, the piping, I'm talking about the heating and the cooling associated with that building. I'm not talking about infrastructure-wise, like walls or windows or anything of that nature. But it would be part of the process to hook it indirectly into the centralized plant and the building that I just mentioned to you that would coordinate and run the campus.
Okay, my second question is for both you and President Cavalluna in regards to the potential for the state to stall on the funding for the tech plans. My, my husband was in commercial construction and I know, and he, and he worked on a lot of U of M and Arbor projects, quite frankly. And you have your contractors all lined up way in advance and you've got contracts signed and you've, and you're, they've got plans in place, timing-wise. If the state doesn't follow through in the timeframe that we have already started our processes, what is that going to do to all of that? Is it just going to set it back or are we going to potentially lose contracts, contractors? Is this really going to throw a huge monkey wrench?
Where we are at is, the IEMP is lined up separately with Johnson Controls. So there's no effect on that project going forward for the next two and a half years. The tech building with it sitting at the state level right now is the approval process to get the match from the state for the project. We have completed the design work, the schematic work and design work. We have not bid any of that information out yet.
Okay.
Plans for construction. So there, we're going with a general contractor status on that, but we have not selected a general contractor or lined up anything yet for the construction. That's something we're anticipating, should things work through, happening in March and April, to get the tech building initiated. But to answer your question, we have not had any commitments on any of the construction yet, only up to the design work.
So, but we could incur higher costs as we wait.
Yeah, we're waiting. It's just south of what, six point eight million, I believe, is what the state match is on the tech building. We have to spend our money first on that tech building.
First, right.
About nine million dollars before we even tap into any state money. So we could make the decision to initiate it, but we'd have to have some really hard discussions with the state that if we did that, would, and this was eventually approved later, would it come through, timing-wise, to, to cover the completion of the project? We haven't approached that yet.
Yeah, because my concern is, is the cost of product even escalates every year. You delay a construction project. So we're, you know, the, the longer we have to wait, the, either the less, the less we get, we have to scale back on something to, for the money we've already committed or we're, we're not going to get quite the same quality or something. I don't know. But I, I do have concerns. I guess we're just going to have to hope. I know how long we've been working on. I mean, my God, I can't even begin to remember when we started this bid for, for this money.
Yeah, yeah. Four, five, four years ago, it was in the capital plan.
So I would hate to see it stalled once again. But, all right, that answers my question. Thank you.
What else? President Cavalluna, please continue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last segment of my time with you during President's Items, I'll look back on two thousand and twenty and I'll break it into segments. One, looking back for my colleagues who are on the call from the college as employees and faculty and staff. You know, I want to compliment everyone who supported this college. The unprecedented teamwork that took place really did pull us through. And that was teamwork from the board, from the school district and the college. And I, I just, I can't say enough about how proud I am about the people who work at the college. We have served thousands of students during a pandemic. We've lost colleagues. We've had students and staff and faculty struggle mightily. But we've pulled together, and I would go so far as to say, we actually have grown and we actually have persevered together. Think about this. We closed our campuses and moved online. Then we partially reopened the campuses. Then we opened the campuses a little bit more. Then we closed the campuses again. Then we opened the campuses a little bit more again. And just think about that. If I were to repeat that to you and you tell us, hey, Cavalluna, we're going to have you guys close the campuses, turn everything online. Then a few months later, open it up a little bit. Then a few months later, open it up some more. Then close it all down again and then open it up a little bit more again so as you can try and get students through, all in the span of ten months. And we expect you to not have any major outbreaks on campus. We expect you to serve students so that their academic success continues. And those that have struggles in this process get support. And that when you do have to reduce employee forces, you do so in a humane and a moral way. You balance a budget and you keep the major projects for this college going forward. I don't know, in the beginning of March, if I'd tell you we were up to the task. But I can tell you here in the middle of December that we were. And I simply can't name all the names that are responsible for that. But I can tell you that they carry a title of either a student, a faculty member, a staff member, or an administrator. And that we are, we are seeing success in a pandemic that I'm immensely proud of. And we are continuing and we never stopped our mission to build better futures through education. I've said a lot about that and I won't go on any further about my colleagues and teammates here, but I mean it from the bottom of my heart and the thickness of my skull, that this is really something I'm proud of. But what would I say if I looked back at the board? What have you all accomplished from two thousand and twenty? I would say that you have guided two institutions in unprecedented work. Now, unprecedented is a term that gets thrown around a lot because it makes people think you're saying something important. But I don't think it's histrionic right now. I would tell you, name a time when these two institutions, either alone, but certainly not together, have had to go through a pandemic with no end in sight, working together, and a board who also hasn't gone through this, but also had to face an election, both in its own members and in a nation that's been divided. And I would say to you that you, board, have made it through. We're not through it all, but you have made, made it through the most difficult parts of two thousand and twenty because of the teamwork that you exhibited as leaders and hopefully because of what you saw in two institutions, the school district and the college pulling together. I don't need to remind you, but I want to say to any public watching this, if you watched this board over the last ten months, you would see a board making the most difficult decisions any public body ever had to make. Maybe public boards a hundred years ago had to make decisions this hard. But I wasn't around then and neither were any of these board members. And I can tell you, in any of our lifetimes, none of us signed up to make these tough decisions. And I'm not asking for anyone to feel sorry for anyone on this board, but I am telling you that watching them make decisions is an example of how government and public entities should work. They did so with transparency. They did so with respectful debate on difficult issues, even when they disagreed, it was respectful. They worked with the college president and the district superintendent to lead those individuals, but also support them through some of the really, really hard times with major pressure from many different sources and frankly, not enough information to make all the best choices and nowhere near the amount of time we all wish we had to make these decisions. So if you were an observer and watched this board during two thousand and twenty, I think you would see, you've got committed public servants who are calmly addressing some of the most difficult issues we've ever seen and who continue to move these institutions forward. And my only prayer is that you see similarly goodwill and talented administrators and staffs at both of those institutions. I also want to compliment the board on the way they conducted themselves through a professional and respectful election in our town. I also want to compliment the board on the way they conducted themselves through a professional and respectful election in our town. They have two new trustees join us, or it could have been any number of new, or up to four new trustees. And I want to say that unfortunately, our children don't get to see that kind of respectful debate and conflict of ideas rather than conflict of personalities along our entire country, but they get to see that here in Dearborn, and I'm proud of that. Now, I want to call out a few board members, and then I know it's hard to believe I'll stop talking. I want to compliment the board chair for having led this board through what no one would have expected and for working in tandem with myself and the superintendent. This is a person who deserves your support as a leader, who worked very, very hard as a liaison between the full board and my office. Who had candid conversations with me when he thought they were appropriate and supportive conversations with me throughout. And was the subject of a lot of criticism. And I think held up very well underneath it. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your, your service. This is your last full board meeting as chair. And I wish we were all together so I could say it to you in person and hand you a gavel. But we'll have that photograph soon, and gosh, goodness knows you already do have the, the gavel as a gift from the college. And we'll hopefully be able to take that ceremonial picture of you handing the gavel to the next chairman when we're all back together. I also want, I also want to speak about our outgoing trustees.
Wait. Can we give Chair Barry a round of applause?
You're the bosses here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unprecedented times.
Took a team. We, 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 we had a nice run because of the teamwork, the support from, from my colleagues, Superintendent Maliko, Dr. Maliko, and of course, Mr., President Cavalluna and his team. It took all of us to get through this year, and I am very, very, very proud of everybody. I know President Cavalluna named off some of the people, but I am very, very proud of how this group came together and got us through this year. Very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I doubt you expected any of this when you took the gavel 12 months ago. But you never shied away from the duty and the institution and me personally are, are better for your service. We have two of our board members who are leaving the board after tonight's board meeting, and I, I have to make a joke and then I'll say some serious things, but I've never heard a more hearty vote for yes on the minutes being approved than by trustee Mead today. Let me start with trustee Lane. If you, if you go to, anyone goes to social media on our, on our Facebook page, you'll see that I've posted a video for you, trustee Lane, and I've uncharacteristically kept it for, to less than two minutes. But I made some comments that I wanted anyone on Facebook to see, but I also want to make a couple of comments about your tenure that spans 20 years serving the college and the district. And a few things that generally apply. You know, trustee Lane, it's no secret that you are unquestionably devoted to education. It's no question that you truly believe that education in a public setting is a public good, in fact, a public right. And it's the belief that you carry and the unapologetic flag you wave for that in a position of power that makes a difference in students' lives. It simply does not happen in all public school users, students, communities, the businesses that get the students to come out and serve in them. And of course, families. It simply does not happen without your passionate and vigorous support for public education. And I speak from a place of experience. My family is a product of public schools and of community colleges. And the things that I have enjoyed in my life are simply not possible without public education. And I know there are thousands and thousands and thousands of examples over the 20 years that you served that can say the same thing that my family can say. You should be proud of the things that you have done, which is to take on the tough fights, say the unpopular things whenever you thought they were right. And for having the wisdom in a leadership position to make the tough calls. You didn't seek popularity. You sought righteousness, and even when you disagree with people, you did it in a respectful but passionate way. And if my daughter were to look up to a leader and see someone who's a public servant, I would point you as one person that she could look to. I, anyone who sees that can, can think of that. But I'd also like to make a couple of comments about our relationship that we shared. I've been here two and a half years. And I have enjoyed working with you. You're one of seven bosses, and that can be a tricky thing. It's no doubt that seven bosses may have seven different opinions. But I always benefited from you giving me yours candidly and honestly. But you'd also allow me to tell you when I didn't agree with it, and you didn't hold that against me. Even when sometimes I did disagree and I ended up being wrong. In fact, in those occasions, you didn't even make me feel bad for it, which I appreciate. And on the few occasions where you and I had vigorous debate, when we came to a conclusion and I was right, you were supportive of me. But in any event, I felt like I had a partnership with you, both of our mission and our devotion to being truthful to each other. And I really appreciate that. You also were willing to, to have a friendship between us as much as a supervisor and subordinate can. And one time you gave me a little piece of chess. Now, if you don't know trustee Lane, she travels the world, and if you can't see, this is really one of the detriments of COVID land, but this is a piece, this is a queen from a chessboard.
The Lewis chess piece.
Trustee Lane gave it to me to, to tell me that I had several queens in my life, and this was one that could help me remember all of them. And I keep it in my office, and I don't have any trouble remembering the queens in my life. You'll also not be surprised that I often get notes from trustee Lane. And you won't be surprised by what sometimes appear on the notes.
Birds.
There's birds and greenery and a beautiful bucolic misthun. And while some of these are pretty personal, I'll just say that they were times, trustee Lane, that you let me have some support in the written word and some emotion, and I appreciate that. I also regret that you and I both shared the loss of a parent during our time, just, just before I started as your colleague here, but during our time as a colleague, you lost a parent. And it was just an unfortunate, terrible circumstance that we were physically together when you got the news. And I, I am so sorry for your loss, and I'm proud of the way you handled yourself in that difficult circumstance because I had recently gone through it. And I hope that it, I hope that I was able to support you in that, in that very difficult tiny moment of time. And I, I hope, and I can see that if, if I ever knew your mother, I think she'd be proud of the person that you are. The last thing I'll say is another note, and this is not a joke, it's another note with another bird. And I wouldn't be bringing these up unless they were meaningful to me, and I'll just read this one to you. Because it, I'll finish with it. It says, Dear Russ, happy birthday. Even when lived in COVID times, every day is still a work of art. I know you'll make it great and enjoy. Mary L. Well, been trustee Lane for two and a half years, but I'll say, Mary L, I appreciate your support of me, and I hope I do honor what you've asked, which is to make it great and enjoy. I've enjoyed my work with you. Uh, trustee Mead. I, I don't have any chess pieces from you. But I do have a record of looking back, not me, but I can look back at history and see that you have 40 years of serving this institution. Forty years of what I say in my short video on the internet where we could call you instructor. We could call you vice president. We could call you interim president. We could call you trustee. We could call you chairman. We could call you mentor to the new president. And I know how deeply you care about this institution because of the way you speak about it and the way you speak about the way it changes lives. You've infused that in all the people you work with here, and you've particularly made me feel proud about that. Goodness knows there are some things you care about. One is the strategic plan. One is the community college movement. And one of the particular things that you care about is students. You've lived that, and your spouse has lived that as an instructor here. And I know that from the work you've done, you too have changed lives through education. You have devoted considerable talents to this institution when your experience and your talents could have taken you elsewhere, but you chose to serve the citizens of Dearborn, the students of Henry Ford College. And then when asked to put your name on the ballot, what no college administrator could ever be talked into, especially not me, you decided you could do it. And I'm glad you did. You were a voice for the college. You understood things that a lot of school board members wouldn't, and you earned the trust of your colleagues on this board to speak about those things, and the college was immeasurably benefited from that. You were a real voice that was unique on this board. I know you never would say that. But I know you aimed to be that. And you were successful in that. You also had the easy task of selecting a new president. And I watched how you do that from the front lines. And you were the chairman during that time, and it was a difficult thing for any board to do, but it was a difficult thing for you to do because the college had different ideas about who the president should be. And I certainly can't quibble with the final results. But when you called me the day that you said that I was selected to be the president, we had a candid conversation. And I expressed to you my excitement about the opportunities, but my concerns about whether I'd get a fair shake to run, to run this college and to get the support I, I needed. And you said to me about this board without question. Don't worry about that for a second. If you come in here and you say you are who you say you are, if you work hard, if you're honest, if you care about this institution, you will be given a fair shot. And you were good to it individually, but you also knew your colleagues on the board because that is what I got. And throughout that time, I needed your help, and you were there for me. And the last thing I'll just say on this before I will stop talking is you stuck your neck out for me. I was an untraditional candidate. And I don't know what you saw in me, but you must have seen something. And you helped me. I so desperately hope you were proud of that selection, and I hope that I've honored your commitment to this institution for the 40 years you gave it. And I am so thankful that you gave me this opportunity because I've enjoyed it. I wish you the very best. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, President Cavalluna. I also take, like to take an opportunity here to thank Dr. Mead. Dr. Mead, thank you for your service. It was an amazing experience for me to serve with a colleague that was so knowledgeable about the curriculum, the processes and institution we call Henry Ford College. Sir, I learned so much from you. For that, I am personally thankful. Again, thank you for your service on the board and your first, for your service to the thousands of Henry Ford College former students. Thank you, sir. Mary Lane, what could I say? It's been an honor to work with you and to learn from you. I will not forget your mentorship the first couple of years I was on the board almost a decade ago. I've always admired your unwavering passion, your fairness, and your attention to details. And your well thought out comments during our public meeting discussions. So, Mary L, thank you for your service to Dearborn and to Henry Ford College for so many years. You're both very, very appreciated. Thank you. I don't know if anybody, any mother of my colleagues would like to say anything at this point, I'll give you an opportunity. Trustee Lane?
Well, I would just pretty much repeat, rehash what I said at the, at the district meeting. I, I feel that I've benefited, that my life has been so enriched over the last 20 years. It's singular honor to be chosen by your peers to steward your, their money and their children, more importantly. The education of people's youth is, is just extremely vital. And to be elected is, is just a great honor. All of us carry a heavy burden to make sure that we don't squander public funds and that we, more, most importantly, that we don't waste opportunities for, for children because we go down this road, we go down any single road. As far as we know, we're only going down this road once. So we have to make sure that the education for all of those students, whether they're kindergartners or whether they're college students, or whether they're early college, whatever. It has to be right. It has to be good. It has to be the best that we can provide for them. And our community has been exemplary in supporting education. Twice we failed huge bonds so that we could deliver something better. There's very few communities across the state typically in these last couple of decades that have done that. So our community has supported us, and I'm really humbled to have been one of the people who have been chosen. So it's, it's a group that is a select group. It's a group that carries a burden for everyone else, and I know exactly some of you that serve with me right now. Some of you know how, and Dr. Mead, even if you weren't serving then, you know exactly how terrifying that burden can be when we had financial difficulties and when, when he had to lay off people. It was absolutely the worst to think that we were throwing people to the wolves and not knowing whether they would get jobs, not know we would pull the college out of you. Right now, we enjoy great fund balances, and of course, we have to guard those zealously because they're so hard earned and they're our buffer against future calamities. So everybody on this board knows what kind of a burden that is, and trustee Dambrosio and trustee Watts, trustee elect. You'll know that very soon, and you'll see that, and then you'll feel that weight every time you go to Myers or every time you stop at CVS and somebody says to you, wait a second, I'd like to mention something to you. It's a really great thing, and I've been singularly honored. I'm humbled that people have chosen me to, to do this, and I am very appreciative because it's made my life so much better. But it, of course, it's not just our board. It's really not our board at all. We, we have the philosophy, we enact these policies, but it's, it's the people who come every single day to their jobs and help other people learn. They're the real champions that get it done. They're the gravity in our solar system. They're the ones that are really pulling the weight. We're just the ones that are leading the team. We're out front. But those, those folks, all of those folks from the lowliest to the base, President Cavalluna, all of those people deserve our unending thanks for coming to work and doing their best and making students feel good, making students feel confident and producing vibrant citizens for our democracy. If we don't do that, we won't have a democracy. We won't have the kind of society that we want to all live in. So I know that that work will be carried on by the new trustees, but I just want to mention to them that the way they can govern most sagely is to appreciate time and human talent. We have two great examples in our leadership right now. We need to value that. If we don't, we're, we're really foolish. We are running our institutions well. We need to continue that. Dr. Maliko and President Cavalluna have led us through this past year, which has been just a complete challenge every single day to who we are and what just a complete challenge every single day to who we are and what we are as an institution. So I just want to hope for the best wishes for the board, for us as a city, and for our governance, because every day we're showing that democracy can work if we take our institutions and our governance seriously. So that's my parting gift to the new trustees and to the present trustees. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Mary. Dr. Mead?
Oh, this is an opportunity for me to talk? Okay. All right. Because I'd like to congratulate the board for the two most important decisions that they made, and that was just what Mary said. The hiring of Dr. Maleko to be superintendent and the hiring of President Russell Cavalluna Esquire, because the CEOs make such a difference. We develop the strategic plan, we approve it, they implement it, we get out of their way, we let them do their work. But I do want to say this to President Cavalluna. He's been so generous with his comments, but I want to, from my point of view, he has a management style of inclusiveness, and I credit him with rebuilding a culture at the college of openness, transparency, trust, and mutual respect, which we needed. It was critical for the college to make any more contributions to the community. I also want to thank him for his efforts outside the college to deal with the state, with our local citizens, and with the federal government, and with the business people in the area. So I couldn't be happier to leave the board with those two leaders. The Dearborn Public Schools and the college will be well-served. Now, I have a couple of other things I want to say, and I apologize for taking so much time. But my wife saw a statement on a shirt that I have to just say out loud. It says this, "I thought growing old would take longer." I remember my dad, when he turned 80 and he died in that year, I said, "What's this all about anyway?" And he said, "I can only tell you this, it goes by fast." Well, in my career, I have devoted my total life to the community college movement. And I have to tell you that the reason why I did that is because of these main ideas. Thanks to President Truman and his commission, they started building community colleges, and we now almost have 1,100 of them across the country. They happen to be located where the population is located. So that's why they're community college. They are serving the people that live in that particular community, and they serve them with an open-door policy, which is a democratic form of post-secondary education. Most of our universities are run with the Germanic tradition of selection. But community colleges give everybody an opportunity to get additional knowledge and skills so that they can make contributions in the community and in society. The other thing that attracted me to the community college is that the faculty had to be qualified. They had to have at least master's degrees or higher, but they were not required to publish or perish, which meant that they could devote themselves to teaching. And so they have five sections, five classes each semester, except English that gets four because they get so many papers. And students coming to the college know that they are going to get the very best formal education that they can for their first two years. And the other part about community colleges is that they're funded differently. So students have some skin in the game because they have to pay tuition. Now, at Henry Ford, they have to pay, they got too much skin in the game. They have to pay too much, but they don't have any choice. The local taxpayers also contribute, and this means that they're involved, but it also means that the college has to serve those people because it's their dollars. So we have to have programs and services that allow a student to get into the economy. So community colleges have liberal arts programs, they have technical programs, and they can serve the needs of students so that some will come just to take a couple courses to enhance their careers. Some will come for certificates so that they can get into a career. Many will come for degrees, and then they transfer, many transfer to the university to finish their education. So basically, I have always had a love for community colleges because they're the foundation of our democracy. Everybody gets a chance for education. I would like to say also that, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say something about the strategic plan. This next coming year, the college will be developing a strategic plan, and it will be submitted to the board for its approval. And I recommend that the board look at the strategic plan very carefully because it's got to serve our citizens. And once the board approves a strategic plan, then the president and his staffs, who are really good, will be able to implement it. And also, because you have a strategic plan, you can evaluate the president based on whether or not he was able to implement it. Of course, screwy things happen during the year like COVID, which you can't really predict, but how he handled that was fantastic. So basically, I would hope the board will pay real good attention to the strategic plan, which will probably be for a two-year period or so. And I would just like to close by saying, I'll be looking at that strategic plan as time goes on myself, and maybe you'll see this old fat guy come up and talk to you at the board meeting if I wasn't happy. So thank you very much to everybody. I couldn't have had a better career in a better area. I'm very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, please. Okay. Madam Secretary, I guess we'll continue with our agenda. Next item, please.
Okay. Action items, citizen participation. Any member of the public who wishes to submit a written request to provide a public statement during the public comment portion of the board meeting will provide that electronic request to Mary Lane by 7:10 p.m. on December 14, 2020. The public comments emails will be read by a designated board member, so the comment may be heard by those electronically attending the meeting. The board rules for the content and length of the public statements remain as if the meeting were held in person. So I need to rely on Kathy. At this point, I did not see any public comments prior to this meeting, and I did check my email, but I haven't checked it since between 7:00 and 7:10. Kathy, Dimitri, can you tell me if there are any comments that have come in?
I have no comments for you.
Okay, great. Mary, are you ready to go on then?
Yes, please.
Special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members of the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Anyone?
Appears not.
Please continue.
Action to approve action items. Move to approve action items numbers one through six as recommended in this agenda.
Move.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion offered by trustee Petyakov and supported by trustee Dr. Mead. Are there any questions pertaining to the action items? Hearing none and seeing none, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dambrosio?
Yes.
Lane? Yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Petyakov?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
President Barry?
Yes, thank you. The motion is adopted by unanimous vote. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Next item is Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Anyone? No? Okay, next item.
Board Committee Reports.
Vice Chair Thorpe?
The schools' foundation met last Thursday and gave their quarterly reports on everything. They are working through all their different scholarships at this point and determining how they're going to do their scholarship event in the springtime.
Great, thank you. I believe that's it for committee reports. Next item, please.
Requests for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
Trustee Lane?
I can't stop myself, Dr. Mead. I know. I said to Hussein, "I don't need to do this," but it's like a compulsion with me. So I caught up on all my reading and enjoyed the president's notes, all 20 pages of them or so, always enjoyable with all of the attachments. But I did have to ask a couple of questions, and obviously, it's theoretically for me, and it's more for trustee-elect Watts and trustee Dambrosio, things that I care about that I hope that you'll keep an eye on for the future. There was some discussion, we've mentioned tonight, the Patterson Tech Building needing updates, and another building that will eventually need to be upgraded is the library. I have a soft spot for the library. I counted my library cards as one of my dearest possessions, even when I was a kid, just to show you how nerdy I was. But the library is sadly rundown. It looks really chintzy, and the carpeting there is actually, you know, there are spots where it was even dangerous. It will need at some point in the future, it needs to be upgraded to the way that people, students, work these days. So that's one thing. And then President Cavalluna, I was most curious when I read that the chemistry lab in the science building needs to be renovated. That's a new building, so I was kind of shocked to hear. I'm not even sure how old that building is. It seems like it's only five to seven years old. Why does the chem lab already need renovation?
I don't know the specific answer to that. I'll find out. And trustee Lane, the questions that you asked me in our conversation on the telephone after having read the president's report, I'm going to deliver a report on all those questions in the next president's update, but I will individually deliver those to you before the end of the calendar year so that you have those. I took those seriously, and I'm working on them. This question about the chemistry lab.
I'd really rather have you have a really good holiday, and even though I might, I'm not officially on the board in January, we could just talk in January, maybe.
That's it. I might take you up on that, but rest assured, I am getting answers to those questions you had. The chemistry one was not one we discussed. So here's my thought, and I will confirm to you and the entire board whether my supposition is correct or not. My supposition is that indeed, the new science wing is, I think, a 2012 build, so it's about, I think, about eight or seven years old. There's two possible things. One is that the chemistry labs are not in that wing. We still have a lot of chemistry or a lot of science classes that are in the old portion of the building and some labs. In fact, I remember having been in there in the third shift when we were doing the wipe-downs for COVID. And a lot of them are labs, and I think some of them may be chemistry labs, so that may be it. And then I also know that when I was an applicant for this position, I did a walkthrough of the campus, and I heard from some employees that some parts of the newer chemistry, our newer science wing, the 2012 edition, had some parts that needed remediation on them, particularly leaky roofs. So I don't know if either of those are the cause or answer, but I'll find out, and then I'll report it out to the board.
I have a few other questions, President Barry. I just want to give somebody else a turn to talk. Am I the only one?
Please, Secretary Lane.
Okay, so I hope in the future, when we do resume in-person receptions, one of the first ones will be on the roof of the science building, and maybe President Cavalluna, you'll make some announcements that we'll all be happy to hear, maybe from the state. Another thing that's particularly important, though, is besides facilities, waste management. So I know that I mentioned before that we ought to start thinking, you know, as a society, we build buildings and then we tear them down in 20 or 50 years, where the Pantheon in Rome stands for 2,000 years and it's just fine. But we have to stop thinking of resources that we can just throw things away without any regards to disposal. Waste disposal and waste management is going to become more and more expensive in the future. I know, for example, that we have a contract to shred documents. Personally, I shred documents. I take the wastepaper and I use it in our composter. So we're going to have to start to think cyclically about the way we use things and reuse things. So I would just like to pitch that idea to trustee Dambrosio and Watts and then the present board members to keep an eye on waste. I wanted to point out also that at some point, hopefully, we'll have children back and childcare on campus. Just, I don't know what's going on with the childcare center. I mean, I know that there's the whole COVID pause, so nobody's really back, but I know that the other board members at some point will need an update on that. And in the report, there was also mention of the future for frontliners. How many of them have already registered at the college? And there are some fees that are not going to be covered for them, President Cavalluna. I don't know how extensive those will be and what the expectation is, whether the people will be, because I don't know how many of them are working in lower-wage jobs or whether they're working, they're frontliners. Some of them might be working in grocery stores, some of them might be, I don't know, they might be licensed practical nurses. But I just wonder, are we thinking of ways that the college foundation or other sources of philanthropy or other financial sources might assist those people, particularly if the fees are going to be significant?
The answer to your question is yes, we are thinking about that because there is a gap, and it very likely will not be fees. It'll be tuition for students coming to Henry Ford College from outside our district who are friends for frontliners. That is the gap there. It is one that we have identified, and we're pushing pretty hard to try and change that. But the uphill battle we've got is that 70% of our students are from outside of the district, which is not typical for community colleges. So it's a problem not entirely unique to Dearborn and HFC, but pronounced for HFC. So I don't have a lot of leverage behind me when I bring this to the state, but I'm still doing it. And then your pivot is the right pivot, trustee Lane. If we can't bridge that gap, which right now is about $74 per credit hour difference between out of district and in district, then what can we do to bridge that gap with some type of philanthropic support? And I'm looking at that now, and I don't have news for you, but I recognize it's a problem.
I'd hate to see that be what stops people in a really unique and innovative program. So we really need to look hard at that. That kind of steers me into the one, I think, maybe my final topic. Trustee McDonald and I talked a little bit earlier after looking at the student enrollment report numbers that you gave us. That's a huge concern, of course. My father did veterans recruitment at Davenport College for a short period of time. He was quite frustrated with it. Anybody who knows the history of the GI Bill, what's commonly called the GI Bill, I can't remember the official title of it. This, I want to direct to trustee Thorpe. the official title of it. This, this, I want to direct to trustee Thorpe. There was initial Republican, it's, I'm sorry to say this, to be partisan, but there was initial reluctance to pass the GI Bill in nineteen forty-three. And the reason for that was everyone said, well, how are we going to pay for it? Unfortunately, fortunately, there were, there was a legislator from Georgia who flew in, the bill did pass, and the GI Bill became one of the most successful programs in in US history. Millions of returning veterans were able to get to improve their lives, to buy homes, and they were the parents or friends of many of us who are sitting here today and who benefited from their educational improvements. Just what I want to say is that I appreciate people who are financially thoughtful. And trustee Thorpe is obviously, he's in financial services. I just want to remind him that we we, besides saying, how are we going to pay for it? Like with energy management, we have to say, well, how can we get it done? Because it's something that's important to do. It was something that changed the future of our country. There are so many public works projects like that that in the beginning, people were very nervous about. There were, there are billions of dollars. The Erie Canal was called Clinton's Big Ditch in the, in the early eighteen hundreds. But it opened up the entire Northwest Territory for settlement to the Native Americans displacement. But it helped many, many people. So I'm just saying that with rural electrification, the interstate highway system, we have to try to remember in our public conversations, not only to ask where does the money come from, but then to say, how can we get it done? So I I, in thinking about veterans, I want to say that I I wish that, I I don't know how far the conversations have gone. They're a group that sometimes is hard to recruit. I know my dad found it hard for some of them to recruit them, even though they had these benefits that were available. I don't know what you need to do, whether Holly Diamond and her crew are thinking of veterans dancing on TikTok or whatever they're going to do to try to get a social media message out. But that's one group that we know has benefits. We know that they would benefit. I think that maybe you need a a unique approach with them to tell them, hey, it's not all math nerds or geeks that go to community colleges and that get advanced degrees. Some of it is really practical work, it's trades, it's skills, and it can make them go from frontliners or people earning lower incomes to jumping up into a really good living like trustee Petchlikoff has talked about with skilled trades. So I don't know how to get those, those guys. And then the guest students also, I know that President Cavalluna, the step, the SEM team has identified those people and they're people that I think of immediately, trustee McDonald and I talked about it. So I hope that you'll be able to think of innovative ways to do that, because it's going to be so important for the college to sit, to stay righted in this next period of real stress in enrollment.
So I appreciate your comments, trustee Lane. My crack staff, one of the benefits of being in Zoom is they can give me, pass me notes much better than they can in real life. So you were referencing the Servicemen's Readjustment Act from the quick research of Rhonda DeLonge and then from Dean Janus Gilliland and Vice President Michael Nealon. The chemistry labs that are going to be renovated were with my first supposition. They are part of the basement of the old part of the building. The newer part of the building are microbiology and environmental studies labs.
Cool. Thank you.
Started to think about some other issues. One, I'd like to kind of hear about where we're at with the nursing program under these COVID days. I know that they're a crucial part of our programs and I know that we had waiting lists at the time. Have we lost those waiting lists? Have people kind of dropped away during this period or are we still focusing on that special population with the burnout that's going on with the current nursing community? And my other question is, how easily are we going to be able to, we did a wonderful job of pivoting to online and this back and forth. And I I'm amazed at how well everyone was able to shift. But after having been on campus and seeing the multitude of F-150s parked in the parking lot and other things, are we ready to shift back to in-person learning just as easily as we took it away?
Well, I'll I'll take, if you'll give it, I'll take the question about the nursing program and take a few days to put together a thoughtful report on that. And I may even have asked Dean Chunkwile to address that, those issues to the board in January. On the question of pivoting back, yeah, I do think we are, in fact, I know from having had to jump back, well, jump out of the classroom, back in, jump out of the classroom, back in twice now. I do know we can do that successfully. However, I do not think that that will be something that we will experience, at least with the frequency that we've experienced it in twenty twenty. Here's why. The winter term, if things hold the way we think they will, they will, the winter term will be ninety percent online, ten percent face-to-face. And we've pretty much nailed down the ten percent face-to-face for having done it in the summer and then most of the fall. Barring anything that changes, like the pause we're currently under, if that pause happens again, of course, we've already know, we know how to go back and forth that from in the fall. But I expect that we'll be just fine delivering the education ninety twenty, ninety ten, like we did this fall. And I think, and I'm hopeful with the vaccines coming out, that we'll be able to stick with that all the way through the end of the fall term, I'm sorry, the winter term. The real question is, when will we move back towards something of a more, more high percentage in face-to-face than ten percent? And I don't know the answer to that. What will, what will dictate that is conditions on the ground and how employees and administrators sense the the safety of that. I don't think what will dictate it is whether we have the ability and nimbleness to do it, because we've, we've exercised that. And I have to tell you, I, the real thing I'm focusing on now is whether we change that ten percent for the spring and summer. We haven't made that decision yet. And then, of course, right behind that is the question of what, what do we do with that ten percent? Does it grow to twenty or thirty or forty percent for the fall of twenty twenty-one?
Are there any other questions, requests for information? Okay, moving on. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Board member commentary.
Trustee Lane?
Poor Dr. Mead.
Getting our last, last licks.
I had to be in character for my last meeting, you know? But this will be quick anyways.
All right.
Everybody at the college has been so great to me over the years, and I really appreciate that almost everybody was, was insightful, eager to tell me what they did. They were always respectful, kind. So I really appreciate that to everybody over so much time. And and Dr. Mead doesn't want to be here all night because I I just can't thank everybody, but I will thank people when we're back together in person. But one person that I I should thank for an absolutely brilliant idea is Dr. Michael Nealon. One thing that astonished me just numbers, not logically, but numerically. With the auto, auto awarding of degrees, that was just a stroke of sheer genius. I still can't quite understand why people won't apply for something that they're, they've already earned. But they, they didn't do it. So to auto award them a degree because they earned it, even whether they wanted it or not, it it's helped our statistics and it it should, it's probably done good things for them psychologically as well, too. So thank you to Dr. Nealon. And then lastly, President Cavalluna is too modest to, or or, I don't know, maybe he doesn't want to mention this for whatever reason. His, his wife has chipped in. So so many times, people just see something that needs to be done and they do it. And I know that Courtney Cavalluna has helped out with the Hawks Nest and then was a runner for the college store also. So she's never been thanked publicly. I want to thank her not only for that, but also just for probably having a husband who probably works nonstop and 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 his kids probably have to listen all, all about college stuff and all of that. But it 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 deserves to be said. So thank you to the entire, your entire family.
Well, thank you, trustee Lane. As a good segue, for one thing, I'll just say to the entire board as an ex-official member, one of the great things we do is gather in December. And Dr. Malako continued the tradition of us gathering as a board and as executives and our spouses and our significant others. And we would have been able to have that kind of conversation that I will tell Courtney that you so graciously recounted, trustee Lane. But in the absence of being able to have pizza or go bowling together, I'll just say to all of you from the cabinet and all the employees, I wish you a safe and comfortable holiday season. My family celebrates Christmas and and I have a seven and six-year-old who will be dominating the house during that timeframe. And goodness knows, we've been bouncing off the walls, so we'll just keep going. And I wish you all Happy New Year. And in twenty twenty, we'll have, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, we'll have a new year and everything will be better. And if it's not better, we'll just keep going forward like we've done already. So I'm sorry, we can't be together, but I'm thinking about all of you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Then I got a comment to make. So I I also want to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. But I was lucky today that Santa Claus visited my house today. So and the gift I got, I'll be using, I'll be using in a couple of minutes, I believe. But yeah, I'll just go ahead and show it at the camera. This is a beautiful plaque. This is a real gavel that I will be. And it says, thank you, President Cavalluna. I really appreciate it. This thing is beautiful. Says Hussein Barry, Chairman, twenty twenty, Henry Ford College, Board of Trustees. I appreciate the present. Thank you. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Did you say Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa?
Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa.
Yes.
And if I miss any of the holidays that we as a people celebrate.
There's, there's quite a few of them this time of year, but those are some big ones.
Yeah, it all happened to a phone about the same time. So thank you.
Okay.
You're always there to bail me out, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Future meeting dates, Monday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, P-12 organizational meeting, six forty-five PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of the state law and virtually available live for viewing via YouTube, Facebook and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen. Monday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, seven o'clock PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of state law and virtually available live for viewing via YouTube, www.youtube.com forward slash DPS, C-O-M-M, DEPT, Facebook, www.facebook.com forward slash Dearborn Public Schools and the cable channels aforementioned. Finally, Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, HFC Meeting, seven o'clock PM via Zoom, following the guidelines of state law. Details to be determined. Check online at hfc.edu forward slash board hyphen meeting hyphen schedule.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and Happy New Year, everybody. And before I adjourn this meeting, hopefully, this is adjournment for the twenty twenty year. So we adjourn this meeting. Have a good night, everybody.